The September first city council meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Father Alex Stein Miller, President Holy Family Crystal Ray, Catholic High School, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand?
Let us, for a moment, just be in the presence of God in silence. Put ourselves in the arms of God as we understand Him. First, we lift up to the Lord in gratitude the lives of William Robertson and Max Cooper. Asking you, Lord, to, for eternity now, let them share in the love that they so generously shared with others in their lifetime here on earth. This morning, I prayed Psalm thirty-seven. Don't worry. Don't worry about the wicked. Don't envy those who do wrong. Quick as the grass, they wither, fading like the green in the field. Trust in Yahweh. Do what is good. Make your home in the land and live in peace. Make Yahweh your only joy, and He will give you what your heart desires. Commit your faith to Yahweh, trust in Him, and He will act, making your virtue clear as the light, your integrity as bright as noon. Be quiet before Yahweh and wait patiently for Him. Lord God, in this quiet, we offer up all the gratitude in our hearts, in whatever way we want to express that. We ask you today, Lord, to give us the strength to prioritize what is good for others, to respect the other first and foremost, to give my attention to the person who is immediately in front of me, and to find delight in whatever you have in store for us today. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen?
Amen. Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, Mr. Corden.
Councilmember.
President.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember Lundey.
Councilmember Parker.
Morning.
Morning. Pro Tem Robertson.
Present.
Councilmember Rafferty. Councilmember Scales.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present. Good morning, Mr. Corden.
Morning.
The minutes are not ready from June 2nd through August 25th. Have communication from the mayor. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. Corden. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning. We want to start again this week with a short video that will focus on the continued community cleanup efforts, if you would. The council did allow us to have the funds necessary in this past budget to address the overgrown lot situation as well as demolish homes. There were thirteen hundred properties citywide that were in a condition that they needed to be torn down. Of that thirteen hundred properties, there were some three hundred and forty-four properties that were listed that had gone through the process of notification, gone through the process of asbestos removal and all those other things that made them ready to be demolished. Of that three hundred and forty-four, three hundred of those were residential properties, meaning houses in the neighborhood. Forty-four were commercial properties. Now, we cannot go out there and tear down all of those houses and all of those buildings in a single month or a single week or a single day. But what I'm pledging to you is that over the next six to twelve months, the houses that we have received money for to demolish those houses, we will address those houses within the next twelve months. I think six months for the residential properties and twelve months for the commercial properties to be torn down over that period of time. One of the things that we're doing, the staff have met with the judges over at the county. He has assigned those to take all of the land cases in batches. By doing that, we can work with twenty-five, fifty, a hundred, even two hundred lots that they can approve. If the lots have, if taxes have not been paid for, what, Phil, five years? If taxes have not been paid on those lots for five years, we can go in and request through the courts that the state turn those properties over to the city. We can then either give that property to the neighbors who live on either side of the property, either split it down the middle or give it to one if the other one doesn't want it. Phil, what do they need to do if they want to get the lot next door to them or something, whatever lot they have?
The first thing we need to do is record your interest in that property, and you can do that one of two ways. You can call my desk at two-five-four-two-two-seven-five, and then you can go online. The city has a webpage for the Land Bank Authority, and you go to the city's main webpage, you click on E-Services, and then you click on the Land Bank link, and you could submit your, your interest in a property through that webpage. There's, there's all kinds of information about the Land Bank on that webpage, and if the property's been tax delinquent for at least five years, we can help you out through the Sidelot program.
At the end of the day, it's the mayor's responsibility to get the job done. If I don't know about it, my staff don't know about it, it can't get done. So no matter what route you take, make sure that it gets to my office. Make sure it gets there, okay?
Birmingham Land Bank Sidelot Program. The Birmingham Land Bank Sidelot Program is established to help homeowners acquire vacant lots adjacent to their property that have been tax delinquent for at least five years. Homeowners have the option of working with the Birmingham Land Banking Authority to accept ownership of the adjacent lot, thereby allowing them to be maintained, allowing them to maintain the lot legally after the Birmingham Land Banking Authority acquires the tax deed for a normal administrative, nominal administrative fee. Birmingham Land Banking Authority will work with the homeowner to eventually clear the title to the property so the homeowner has full ownership of the adjacent lot. The homeowner is also, also has the option to work with the Birmingham Land Banking Authority to clear title immediately, though this is a longer and more expensive process. We have, we have had over five hundred calls concerning the Sidelot program and expect our first group of sixty to a hundred people in this, in this week to start the process. So we look forward to working with those residents who want to take control and ownership of the properties next door to them. The month of September is designated the ovarian GYN cancer awareness month. In honor of those who have lost their lives, those who can, who are continuing to fight this disease, the City of Birmingham will be lighting City Hall in green teal or teal green all month long. This morning, I would like to welcome Zeke Willis, husband of an ovarian cancer survivor, Wilma Latham, a GYN cancer survivor, and Kelly Rice, a fourteen-year ovarian cancer survivor and chair of the, of a State of Teal Committee to accept the proclamation on behalf of the City of Birmingham. The proclamation reads, there's been some adjustments here. Whereas ovarian gynecological cancers are among the leading cancer killers of women in the United States, and more than ninety-eight thousand women will be diagnosed, and more than thirty thousand women will die from these diseases this year. And whereas it is critical for women, physicians, and all healthcare providers to recognize the risk factors and symptoms of ovarian and gynecological cancer, and to remember the importance of early detection in preventing and treating these diseases. And whereas continued progress in the battle against ovarian and gynecologic cancers requires increased awareness and education, and all educators, educators, service providers, researchers, and advocacy groups are urged to work together to inform more women about ovarian and gynecologic cancers and to educate women in Birmingham and the state of Alabama about screening services. And whereas it is also crucial that all women in Birmingham and the state of Alabama take an active role in learning the symptoms and the risk factors associated with ovarian and gynecologic cancers, developing healthy habits, and undergoing regular medical examination so that any occurrence of these diseases may be detected in their early and treatable stages. Now, therefore, I, William A. Bell, Senior, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, do hereby proclaim September two thousand and fifteen as ovarian and gynecologic cancer Awareness Month throughout the city and encourage all of our residents of Birmingham to work together to raise the awareness of ovarian and gynecologic cancers, and do commend this observance by all of our citizens during this month.
Come on up here, ladies. I, I know that you work very diligently, all of you all, to raise awareness for these deadly diseases, and we want to thank you on behalf of the City of Birmingham for your efforts, and may we all work together to end this terrible dread on our society. Thank you all.
Like the mayor said, it's strange maybe to have a man come up here and accept this. But men are affected by this disease as well as women, and that's something we all need to be aware of, all the women in, in the City of Birmingham, all the men who are husbands or fathers or brothers or sons of women need to be aware also of the dangers of ovarian and gynecologic cancers and also of the warning signs that alert you to that. My wife is a thirteen-year survivor, and we were fortunate that thirteen years ago she knew about the signs of ovarian cancer and was able to go to her doctor here in, here in Birmingham, which is the other blessing that we have with the, with the healthcare facilities that we have in the city. So it's, it's a great honor that the City of Birmingham is recognizing this, this need for awareness, and people like the Birmingham Barrens are putting on awareness events so that things like that are improving the awareness of ovarian cancer.
Thank you, Zeke. Ladies, would you all like to say something?
I'm Doris Moody, and I'm the media chair for this effort. We're all volunteer with this effort that we're doing, and we're just so thankful that the City of Birmingham is participating this year. Very excited to have City Hall lit up. The bulbs are in the communications office right now. But the initiative is called a State of Teal, and astateofteal.org is the website that you can go to to see what this is all about. It's not just about lighting things in teals, but it's raising awareness of the symptoms of this disease and the efforts that we're making to try to make a difference with early detection of ovarian cancer, support of GYN cancer patients. And Zeke's wife is, is one of the example of one of those patients who's really struggling going through treatments right now. So we appreciate your time and hope you go to the website, astateofteal.org, to learn more about it. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. As presidents and councils, you all have probably heard of the passing of two great Birmingham-area citizens. One, one is Mr. William Robertson, who was the head of Monumental Construction Services, who passed on this Saturday, and it would be a great loss, not just from a business aspect, but from a great citizen aspect as well. William was involved in a lot of projects with the City of Birmingham and throughout this entire state. The other individual that passed was Dr. Max Cooper. Dr. Cooper, while he was a great physician, he was also widely known for his business acumen as the owner of, at one time, all of the McDonald's in the City of Birmingham. And we want to recognize both of those individuals passing and the contributions that they've seen to the community and this society. That's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry. Want to bring up Ms. Gwen Webb at this time. Gwen?
Can we do a resolution for? Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilor Scales.
Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, before we move any further, I'd like to move for a resolution on behalf of the entire council for Mr. William Robertson, an iso move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed.
The same for Mr. Cooper as well. I'd like to.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed.
Thank you, colleagues.
That's for both of those items, Ms. Corden. All right, those pass. Thank you. Councilor Scales. Ms. Webb?
Good morning to our illustrious mayor and Mr. Patton, to our president, President Pro Tem, and all of you great counselors. I come here on behalf of Foot Soldiers International and the people, the citizens of Birmingham. But before I say my little bit, I would like to bring to you in front of me is Counselor David Vance, V-A-N-C-E. It made me think of David Van, but it's David Vance, Bessemer City Counselor. If you would, just listen to him, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Recently, there was a petition on change.org about several paintings at the Jefferson County courthouse, and I took it upon myself to try to bring this painting down. In efforts of doing that, I passed a resolution with the City of Bessemer, where certain murals painted during nineteen thirty at the west entry of the lobby of the Jefferson County courthouse in Birmingham, Alabama depict racist old South images which many believe are celebratory representation of inequality. And whereas the governing body of the City of Bessemer, Alabama, believes that such representation of inequality painted upon a place representing justice and equality are inappropriate, and therefore should be considered for removal. Now, therefore, it will be resolved by the City Council of the City of Bessemer, Alabama, as follows, that these images depict, represent inequality affixed to the Jefferson County courthouse are contrary to representation of justice and equality before the law, and therefore, removal of such images should be done. The resolution was passed on July seventh, two thousand and fifteen. I have visited other cities who have pledged to do the same, Brighton, Midfield, Fairfield, and Lyssen. So now I'm here with the City of Birmingham, asking for support to pass a resolution so we can remove these racist images from Jefferson County courthouse.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council.
Good morning, Reverend.
I'm Reverend Harry Turner, special projects coordinator for the Birmingham Metro NAACP. The Metro Birmingham chapter of the NAACP is strongly supporting this endeavor and has been key in taking this petition to the next level. Councilman David Vance Bessemer has been generously working on getting resolutions of support passed in the local city councils. William A. Barnes, President of the Birmingham Irving League, is in support of this effort. Ezekiel Jackson, President of Birmingham Metro NAACP, Team Seven, and also Foot Soldiers International. I'm sure we all agree that Birmingham is in a new day. The only problem is hard looking at a new day when you're looking at an old nightmare. God bless you.
In our closing, I would just like to say, and speaking all over the country, I praise and thank God that people see a change in our magic city. And in seeing that change, I had a group from Washington, D.C., a very diverse group, and when I carried them to the courthouse and they saw this mirror of slaves picking cotton. And if you haven't seen that mirror, I would like for all of you to go over there and look at that, even though my grandmother picked cotton back there in the days. A lot of the people said, well, you tore down the beautiful structures that you had, old structures, and with Birmingham being holy ground, we're going to leave this standing? I think not. But I hope and pray, on behalf of the citizens of this great city, not just on behalf, and all of these organizations are working together, Foot Soldiers International, NAACP, cities oh, in Jefferson County, with petitions drawn up, and there is a petition online that has conjured thousands so far, and we're just asking our city, our city who brought about the change with the children in nineteen sixty-three, our city who is still bringing about a mighty change in Birmingham, Alabama, our city that has brought both black, white, and Asians and all others together in this city, please, ma'am, please, sir, help us to take care of this and get this out of our Jefferson County courthouse. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council, and we hope and pray that we can get a resolution like the other cities have given on behalf of this, not just for you, not just for us, but for the people.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, that's all I have at this time. Councilwoman Hoyt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, again, I just need to say thank you. They did take care of the on and off ramp at, at Enslay, at Avenue Iron, so I appreciate that very much. And I also appreciate the fact that when I saw in the video that they were tearing down the house, that it was clear, because on Pike Road, we paid these folks to tear it down, and they left the concrete porch still in place. I've been talking about this for the last three, four years, but it's still there. Now, somebody's cutting it now, but they, you know, we paid for them to tear it down, and that includes foundation and all. Isn't that what our ordinance says when, when, when we get these lots, that they take up the foundation and all that?
I'm assuming that it says that. Andre, can you answer that?
Counselor, it does, and we do that. I'm not sure about this particular property, whether or not it was done by a private contractor or our contractor. I'll go out and check on it and let you know, give you a report.
Yeah, it's right next door to the Bell South, a little station there, and it's still there, but somebody has cut the grass, and I, we really appreciate that. But that structure's still sitting there and can be seen as you drive by. But, but I want to thank you for your efforts and this, and Public Works for that. Thank you.
Councilor Scales?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Mayor. On Wilderness Lane, which is in zip code three-five-two-three-five, the, the citizens are asking that the right-of-way be cut back, and the trees and brush basically have grown out, overgrown in that area that is on Wilderness Lane. Also, we have at nine hundred Meg Drive, M-E-G, we have overgrowth over there, and this particular piece of property, my understanding from several three-one-one calls that this citizen believes that this is city-owned property. They have maintained their property, and the, the homeowners surrounding that area, they have maintained theirs, but there's just a strip of land that they perceive as being owned by the city that has largely overgrown. Also, on Carson Road, Mr. Mayor, just as you turned to go to the former Arthur Elementary School, there is a lot that has overgrown. I know it's private property, and I've heard you clearly about your position in, in that regard, because it's undeveloped land, but if we could at least have the right-of-ways cleaned and cut on Carson Road, we'd certainly appreciate it, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention this morning. Lastly, in light of a senseless murder that occurred on Old Springville Road, the Springville Road Landing Apartments, this is a student from Huffman High School. Because there's such a sensitivity around the alleged shooter, if we could have, Mr. Mayor, more police to be assigned in that area, and I'm talking about on Springville Road in addition to Huffman High School, it's just a sensitive time right now, and both students, both the victim and the alleged shooter, attended the school. So if we could have some help in that regard, Mr. Mayor, I'd certainly appreciate it. The last thing is that on the right-of-way of, is on the corner of where Edwards Lake Road and Springville Road intersect, there is overgrowth where you see the Spring Lake Neighborhood sign. Didn't understand what was the thought process that I noticed that it was clear where the Huffman sign is, which is only across the street, but the Spring Lake sign has nothing but overgrown weeds around it. So, and it's on the same block. So, Mr. Mayor, if you can help us with Public Works to, to get that cleaned up, we'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Tyson?
Thank you, President. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
I have on Seventeenth Way, past New Hope Baptist Church on the side of the road. It's like a little ditch where the water runs. It's, it's at least fifteen feet high to where the resident, it's, it's, it's like, it's way off from the residence house, and it's in a ditch, and it needs to be cut. And also, it's a ditch on the right-hand side off of Seventeenth Street also needs to be cut. And it's a house right cross from New Hope Baptist Church, which is seventy-five percent burned, and I have put that in way back in two thousand and twelve, when the house was burned, and it's overgrown and burned, and we can look into the church actually purchasing the property after we tear the house down, because they have bought several properties round there. Five abandoned houses and lots on Twenty-first Street and Henry Crumpton Road are overgrown and in very bad condition, and one was set on fire last week. And I discovered these many houses on one street when I walked through yesterday in the community, and it's in very bad condition, and we would like to see about getting those torn down and the weeds and the grass cut in those, and thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Mayor. I just want to thank Public Works for their immediate attention to the concerns on Pearson Avenue and Germania Park. They expeditiously addressed the overgrown median in areas that were cut. There was trash in alleyways off of Twenty-eighth Street Southwest, and I just want to thank Public Works for their support in that effort, and Mr. Fancy and your department. Mayor, you mentioned William Robertson, and we passed a resolution of sympathy. I know he attends Councilor Scales' church, but we had a very good conversation Friday at the kickoff and grand opening of Negro League Museum, Mr. Robertson and I. Very genuine person, very brilliant individual, African-American business owner in this community, and he's going to be missed tremendously, and our prayers are with the Robertson family. He also has some Collegeville ties and knew my family well, and I just, he's going to be missed, Councilor Scales. I saw also, Mayor, the kickoff for Innovation Week, which I think is very exciting for this week. Is there itinerary, a schedule of, and I know you acknowledged that last week, but events going on for Innovation Week this week?
There, there is one. I don't have it available, but can't think of Devin's last name, but he should be able to give you. Rektro. Director of Innovation should be able to give it to you. It should be online as well.
Okay, I'd just like to attend some of that and get the ideas and concepts of what some of our technology businesses are thinking about for the city of Birmingham. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Clark, we're ready to move on with the consideration of the consent agenda.
We have boards and agencies, you want to take care of that first. We have vacancies in boards and agencies.
For October, I don't have any announcements.
We have some, we have several.
Okay, I'm saying I don't have them in front of me.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
With the Park Parking Authority, we have Larry Ward. Term expires October the 31st, 2015. It is a four-year term, and it's under Transportation and Communications Committee. With the Birmingham Planning Commission, we have Brian E. Johnson and Michael Morrison. And it's, they are six-year terms, aspiring October the 6th, 2015. And they are under the Planning and Zoning Committee. We have several vacancies with the Southern Museum of Flight. George Anderson, Anne Hooks, Gary Nash, Raymond Ross, Ken Copeland, Alan Mosley, Dr. George Pesnick, Billy Singleton, Logan Smith, Austin S. Landry. All terms expire October the 12th, 2015. And it's a three-year term. And then we have annual members Randall Whitehouse, Stephen Allen Jr., Beverly Baker Esquire, William Moran, Marlon Priest, Bobby Lott Jr. Term expires October the 12th, 2015. And they're all under the Park Recreation and Cultural Arts Committee. All right, that's it.
All right, those announcements been made, and then we'll make the appointments, necessary appointments over the next few weeks. All right, let's move on with the consideration of the consent agenda, Mr. Clark.
Consent agenda starts on page two. We have items one, two, and three on consent. Page three, we have items four through six on consent. Page four, we have items seven and nine on consent. Item eight was removed from consent.
That's correct. Eight was removed, yes.
Page five, items ten, eleven, and twelve are on consent. Page six, items thirteen and fourteen are on consent. Page seven, we have items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen on consent. However, there's an update on seventeen with a language change in the actual resolution itself. Two, three, four, fourth line up on the resolution to an appropriation and council's approval for subsequent years. And I'm trying to, there's a three-year timeframe in front of that. Three years subject to an appropriation and council's approval. And also on the synopsis as well, we'll place that there. That's number seventeen. And page eight, pick back up with the consent agenda with items twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Page nine, we have items twenty-three through twenty-six on consent. Page ten, we have items twenty-seven through thirty on consent. Page eleven, items thirty-one through thirty-two on consent. Page twelve.
Through thirty-three.
I'm sorry?
Said item thirty-one through thirty-three.
On page eleven, thirty-one through thirty-three?
Yes.
Okay. Page twelve, we have items thirty-four through thirty-seven, with thirty-seven being added to the consent agenda. Page thirteen, we have items thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one on consent.
Okay, and we have, all right, are there any members of council who wish to speak to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Mr. President? Where Abbott?
Excuse me, I would like to remove item seventeen from consent. And add item forty and forty-one on page thirteen to consent. If they haven't already be.
Item forty and forty-one are already on consent. You want to remove item seventeen, yes. And add forty and forty-one, which are already on there.
But they're already on there, that's all.
All right, Mr. Protem?
Mr. President, was item thirty-nine added to consent? I'd like to remove that from the consent agenda for discussion purposes.
Okay. All right.
Thirty-nine.
Can we, no, can we add item forty-four to the consent agenda? It's dealing with an event held at during the Magic City Classic.
Yeah, you all got that.
Yes, sir, we're, yes, sir.
There's supposed to be a language addition.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to note that language?
Yes. Counsel Skiles?
Thank you, Mr. President. We just need to make sure that we delete twenty-eight and just put twenty-nine only for the date, twenty-nine only for the date.
Okay.
And I'll look into the language and make sure. Ms. Kidd, was that added what we talked about this morning?
Yes, it's on the resolution as it says in me.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, all right, then that's the only change, is to make the date twenty-ninth only.
All right, Ms. Counsel Hoyer?
Yes, I'd like to remove item nine from consent. I'm sorry, I guess I should have given you.
Item nine, page four.
Four, mhm. Okay. And. I think that's it, thank you.
All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Did we add item forty-two to consent?
Item forty-two on as an addendum? No, we did not.
It's on the addendum. I'd like to add that with one, one change to the contract, and it's in section two.
Under fees and expenses.
Yeah, it's under fees and expenses, and it's the last sentence. Bressler's fees are not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I'd like to change that to Bressler's fees and expenses are not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. But with that change, we could put it on consent. Can we do that?
Yep.
Well, I move that change and to place it on consent.
All right. All right, do we have any other members of council who wish to speak to the consent agenda? Are there any other?
You need it.
Counsel Skiles?
Okay, so let me ask you, Mr. President, is there a question in regard to number eight, Mr. President, that can be answered so it can remain on consent since we mentioned on last week that it had become before us? Is it that the language was not included? Okay.
So, Mr. Bittes asked for a one-week delay on it so they can get the language correct.
So that one sentence has not been added? Mr. Bittes, I mean, Mr. Mayor, can he answer?
Counsel, we sent that, the Law Department was working with the council office, legal council, on the language, and it was sent to them late last night, I believe. And now we have to send the contract back to the contractor because the language has changed for him to sign. So we have to send it back, when it comes back, we'll bring it back to the council for final approval.
But the language has been amended, and they just, they just didn't do it till last night.
That's correct.
Okay, so is it possible then that we can pass it today with that understanding, Mr. President? Or we just still need to have a one-week delay?
Counsel, since the language has changed, I have to send that back to the contractor for him to sign and return to us. And then we'll bring it back to council for approval.
Mr. President?
But it will come back before us, Mr. President, in one week?
We delay it for one week, yeah. Ms. Kidd?
There are some other changes that council legal had sent to the council on Monday that we haven't gotten our response back from you all. But we certainly will share that with the Law Department relative to this item.
So we can have all this done by next Tuesday?
Yes.
You have anything else, Counsel Skiles?
No, Mr. President, at this time, thank you.
Do we add item forty-three to the consent agenda?
Nope.
That's an addendum.
No, sir.
Want to add that to consent?
Object.
Object.
All right. Okay, so are there any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. There are any members of public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. We have a mover and a second on the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Abbott Roberson.
All right, voting should be open. Councilmember Lundey.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. That vote should be up.
That item passes. First item, Mr. Clark, should be item eight.
Item eight. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Battle Miller Construction Corporation Hoover, Alabama, in the amount of one hundred and four-thousand-eight-hundred dollars for Echo Highlands Park renovations and substantially deformed contained within the bid documents and according to a said bid, which was accepted and adopted by the council July the 28th, 2015 by Resolution Number 1129-15, providing that total compensation payable under the contract now to receive the appropriation.
We have a mover and a second.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the item.
We have, we have a motion for a one-week delay.
I move for a one-week delay.
Second.
Abbott Roberson, ready to vote, Mr. Clark.
Okay, one week. Voting should be open now. Councilmember Abbott.
All right, that item we delayed for one week, next item, item nine.
Item nine. An ordinance to further amend the grants fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016 by amending the Community Development Disaster Recovery Grant by appropriating one-hundred-thousand dollars to planning and management and one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars to public facilities and improvement per requested amendment number five.
We have a mover and a second. Lundey Parker. Counsel Hoyer?
Yes, I wanted this to be off consent because summarily, I agree with some of the items, but I'm not agreeing with all the items. And so that's why. And I think I raised my concerns before in committee. So I just want to stay true to what I have assumed and have deliberated on. Thank you.
All right, do we have any other speakers to this item? Counsel Parker? Your name is, if you want to speak to it.
Oh, I can step in at this.
All right. All right, Mr. Clark, we're ready to vote.
Voting should be up.
All right, that item passes, one no vote, Counsel Hoyer, next item.
Should be item number fifteen. It's on page six. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for professional services between the city of Birmingham and handprint government affairs under which handprint government affairs will provide external affairs and federal lobbying services to the city and will present, represent the city as lobbyists in Washington, D.C. for an initial term of one year, with such contract to be renewable by mutual agreement of the parties for up to three additional terms of one year each subject to the appropriation of funding for the contract and the city's budget for the fiscal year corresponding to the one-year renewal term for an annual professional services fee in the amount of three-hundred-thousand dollars, which will be payable through a monthly retainer of twenty-five-thousand dollars per month.
We have a mover and a second.
I move the item.
Second. All right. Speakers, ready to vote.
Voting should be up. Councilmember Skiles?
All right, that item fails, next item.
Should be item number seventeen. Item seventeen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a security services agreement with Sandgauer Security Services LLC for the provision of security services and public safety in and around Railroad Park and under which the city will compensate Sandgauer in an aggregate amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars for a term of three years subject to the, I'm sorry, subject to an appropriation for each subsequent year.
And you've already added the other.
And the language, subject to council approval.
Okay.
Move the item.
Second.
That was in the resolution as well, right?
Ready to vote, Mr. Clark.
Who did the motion, I'm sorry?
I did.
All right, voting should be up.
That item passes, next item.
Should be item nineteen. A resolution approving the appointment of Multi Vista, Alabama, Birmingham, in the amount not to exceed nineteen-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars inclusive of any reimbursable expenses to provide project documentation and photos of site and structures for the Intermodal Facility Project and authorize the mayor to execute the appointment on behalf of the city.
We have a mover and a second.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Abbott Roberson.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Got a question?
I move for a, that we send this to the Budget and Finance Committee. It has not been there yet. So our next meeting is September 14th.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
All right, Counsel Hoyer?
Yes, I just want to raise a quick, what is the minority anticipation out there? Because I was told that there's little or none with respect to this project, and I just need to know.
Yes, sir, we had actually, we were working on the, this is the second phase of the project. The first phase of construction, we had, counsel, we had about little over twenty-six percent. On the design services contract, which is the, you know, architectural engineering, we had about thirty-four percent. And this last phase of the project, we have about sixteen and a half percent.
Okay, can you give me a list of those?
Yes, sir.
Participating?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
We have that at committee of the whole, I mean, or at Budget and Finance?
Right, that'll be good.
All right. All right, we have a motion on the floor to refer it to the Budget and Finance Committee.
That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item.
Item thirty-eight has been requested to be withdrawn.
Item thirty-eight will be withdrawn.
Next should be item thirty-nine.
Okay.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a second amendment to the contract for professional services with Dale Perkins doing business at Master Solutions LLC, under which Dale Perkins will provide state government lobbying and will represent the city as lobbyist in Montgomery, Alabama, for the 2016 regular session of the Alabama Legislature and other government relations services for the benefit of the city of Birmingham for a professional services fee in the amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars during a term from August the 31st, 2015 through June the 30th, 2016, to be payable on a monthly basis following the submission of an invoice to the city by Dale Perkins detailing the services undertaken during the preceding month. Move the item.
Second.
Mr. Protem? Lundey, Lundey Hoyer?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. Perkins presented to the committee of the whole on this past week. And the unreadiness that I have as it relates to his capacity in serving as a lobbyist, he mentioned a federal-level capacity. He has worked with us as a council on the state level in dealing with legislative sessions and some local. Now, I do know that he also serves as a lobbyist for the Transit Authority. And his explanation to us was that he was going to do federal lobbying on behalf of the city, and specifically the council, as it relates to transit and things of that nature. Now, I have some disposition due to the fact that I have. Now, I have some disposition due to the fact that I have, uh, served as president pro tem of the city council for two years now. And have not been involved in any debriefing as it relates to Mr. Perkins and his capacities as a service to this council. I don't know if any of my other colleagues have had a one-on-one to assess his performance as it relates to his services to this council. And I think I'm due that. Uh, this is not a personal attack on Mr. Perkins, it's a business acquisition. And I would think respectfully that each and every one of us would get the opportunity to see, uh, what he has done and his performance and his due diligence as it relates to the services of the council. Now, I've received reports, I've received emails of what transpired, uh, during legislative sessions, but, uh, in a sense of transparency, in a sense of, uh, cooperative communications across this council, he represents this council. And I think it's important that, uh, uh, we understand where things are. And I know pay raises have been a big issue lately and I won't get too in-depth on that, but to see these services go from twenty-five thousand dollars in the first year to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Is a pretty heavily increased stipend. So I just think there's some inquiries that I have, uh, as a counselor, uh, that I need to sit down with Mr. Perkins to get a better understanding of what his position is going to be. And, you know, we need to make sure that we have representation that's going to have the interest, the best interest of each council member, uh, that's represented here on this Birmingham City Council, so we have an understanding of what's going on. Uh, that's my comments, Mr. President, thank you.
Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President, well, um, I had a question or a couple of comments really on this, um, you know, we have not approved the contract of our longstanding lobbyist today. And now we have, um, we seem to be expanding the second lobbyist that we've had for a shorter period of time. And I cannot recall ever seeing the scope of work for these lobbyists and what their deliverables are. And I think that goes to what the president pro tem was talking about. We need to have expectations, but we're not, at least I, am not sure what my expectations are supposed to be because I'm not sure what they're supposed to be delivering to us. Aside from lobbying services, which is a very, uh, esoteric thing to be talking about, exactly what are we getting for our money and how will we know when we get it? I don't know the answer to that question right now, I know with Handprint Bell, we've got written reports and personal visits. And I know we've received reports from Mr. Perkins and I like both of our lobbyists a lot. I just want to know, do we have a written scope of exactly what it is that they're supposed to be doing for us besides, you know, lobbying? And then what is the deliverable? What are we going to receive on a routine basis because we've gotten very focused on planning? And also on receiving information on a routine basis, so do we have that in writing anywhere? And can the council members be provided with that? Because I read what was in our packet and it doesn't really outline what we're going to receive. And I realize that was probably in the original contract, but we are amending the past contracts so we don't have it before us, we just have the amendment. So who, who has that?
Um, he's provided a copy of his proposal to each council member, but we'll make sure we get you another copy of it.
Yeah, because mine may have disappeared.
He has. Uh, Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, uh, Mr. President, in, in the interest of, um, questions that have been raised today, um, I'm going to suggest after my comments that we, uh, at least, um, give the, the pro tem what he, uh, has asked for as an audience with him so he can understand what it is he's doing. Okay, I just, you know, that's all fairness. But I don't know what's so special about cutting and pacing. You know, uh, and you talk about reports, you know, we get stuff from the Congress office and this is the same stuff that other folks are presenting. And, uh, and I've said this before, just cutting and pacing. And so is that what we paying for? Because, I mean, you know, been very little results and I had planned not to say anything, quite frankly. Uh, but, you know, it's been a long time, um, since the other folk have gotten my vote. And it was caused of that, that reason, you know, and being able to sit down and, you know, and, and have formidable discussions. You know, I just, you know, I'm just not for it. But if this man provides, um, a service and I think, um, um, it warrants him getting before the pro tem and so he can have an understanding of what it is he's offering. But, um, I just think sometime we get a little relaxed, uh, when, um, when things are willed to us as opposed to earning. And, uh, I, you know, I just don't subscribe to that. Yeah, um, and I have not seen any great results. And I've been asking for labor, um, uh, grants and those kinds of things for our youth. I've been asking that for the last seven years. Hadn't got not one thing. Not one. Not one. And the highest unemployment in the city of Birmingham and in the nation too is that of youth. And we already talking about, um, how these young people are doing all sorts of stuff. And we need to be engaged. You know, the promise, I think, uh, for the American youth is to get a job. And so they become, uh, productive and, uh, and, and great citizens of our, uh, society. Uh, but it's not going to happen if we don't somehow empower them with the tools that gives them some ownership in, in society. I just believe that and I'm not a socialist. But I am one who, uh, thinks that our young people need to be empowered. And what better way to empower them than to engage them and work? And so they develop some understanding of how they sustain in this society. That's what we got to have and I'm telling you, I have yet to see it. Nothing has come here that says we're going to employ youth. And that, you know, and the Department of Labor has monies and grant monies that are there. You know, that's part of the responsibility of the lobbyists. You know, and so I don't, when I vote no, I don't just make, uh, you know, just air. I have real concerns and I've been raising the same concern and you're the most senior person on this council. I have not moved away from that to this day. Now Bishop Hord say when you're fanatical, you don't change your mind and you don't change your subject. And I'm not about to change it today.
Thank you. She's the longest-serving council member.
Yes, the longest-serving, that's right. And I'm the second.
Counselor Scales.
Thank you, Mr. President, well, let me just say this for public consumption. Because I certainly wouldn't want it to appear, um, uh, counselors that, uh, there has been anything that the public would not be privy to. And I, that's my only nature for wanting to speak is because in the committee of the whole meeting, uh, counselor. It, Mr. Perkins did provide, uh, along with, if my memory serves me correctly, the federal firm even provided their services. Now, it didn't magically disappear, maybe you just didn't take it off the table. But it was on the table, every council member got it. And let me just say this because, just because you don't vote a certain way or you vote a certain way, that don't mean that you, you got something personal with anyone, because I don't. But I will say this, uh, speaking of this particular contract, there is a report of bills that have passed, have not passed. Um, and I can tell you that I passed it out in my district, so I actually read against what some folks want to think that folk don't read, I actually read. If you give it to me, I'm gonna read it, okay? And if I read it and if I believe that what I've read is to be accurate, I'm gonna stand by it. And so I actually took this gentleman's, uh, in terms of what the service that he provided for the state. I took it upon myself to ask exactly what did you do down there? And, uh, you know, he said he made va- available to every council member everything that was passed on the state level. I was so impressed with the report so that out of transparency to my constituents, I passed it out at all my neighborhood meetings. And any other meeting that I could have, I wanted to make sure they had a copy of it. You know, I just want to take away because, see, we have to be very careful as council members that we don't inflict our own wounds. You know, there's no secret going on here, you know, the bottom line is that he, uh, uh, Mr. Perkins provided, uh, in our committee of the whole, uh, which most council members were there that are present today. What he was doing, if you don't like what he's doing, then vote no, but don't, don't say something disparaging about a historically underutilized business enterprise, also known as minority, because they provided it. Now, we're not voting for this because of the fact that they are a minority, it was the quality of the service. And so if we had any questions at that time, all we had to do is just simply ask. If we disagree with it, don't vote for it. But don't say that both individuals, not just Perkins, but actually the one we just finished voting on, they both made a presentation. And so if we didn't agree with it, just say that. But please, let's be careful that we don't discredit one another in, in the midst of trying to, to make a decision on what we're doing here today. Both firms were there, there was nothing secretive, they both gave what it is that they were offering, one on a federal level, one on a state level. And then there was mention about some federal assistance, but mainly it was geared toward the state. If you read the synopsis of the item, it says state. That was just another service that that individual through that service could provide. So, you know, again, I just don't want us to get into discrediting one another because the minute I see those photographers moving, I only have myself and this council to blame. If we're making it seem like something secretive has happened when nothing is going on behind closed doors, period. We need to get away from that and I'm hoping that the council will do that. We don't need to write our own bad press. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Lundey, what's your name? Uh, Mr. Protem, second time.
When I opened up my statement, uh, in the proposal that was presented in the meeting that I attended, which is the committee of whole meeting, which is a public meeting. I had asked the individual, Mr. Perkins, regarding the federal lobbying aspect of his proposal. I read the same proposal that Counselor Scales has mentioned and other counselors have mentioned. As relates to the services aspect of it, that's my query. I can get a report from numerous lobbyists from Montgomery. But when it comes to making sure that everybody on this day is, is comfortable about what's going on as far as the service in the best interest of our citizens, that's what's most important in my opinion. So I had some questions, I asked them at the committee of whole meeting, uh, of Mr. Perkins and was not comfortable with the response. So here we are today and not discrediting anybody. That's not what this is about. This is making sure that we have the professionalism and support we need to help, uh, the citizens of the city of Birmingham. And that's what my unreadiness is about today. So that being said, I appreciate Counselor Hord offering a delay. I also think this is something we need to look at potentially with other lobbying firms, whether they're black, white, Chinese, Japanese, Hispanic. As long as we get the good quality of service to our, uh, citizens, that's what this is all about. So, um, hopefully we could look at Mr. Perkins' proposal again. Uh, consider some other firms that might have interest to be a part of this process and, and, and go from there. I'm just not happy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, Ms...
We read, Counselor Hoyt, your second time.
Yeah, thank you, um, I was under impression that you had not, uh, ascertain the information that you... I didn't know that you, you know, you had issues with what he presented.
No, but Counselor Hord, as pro tem of this council, I am not briefed on what's going on. I'm not communicated with on what's going on. And I'm sitting right here next to the president. What I'm saying is, and I'm not attacking the president, I should know what's going on as it relates to the lobbying of this council. I've sat down with Darryl Perkins and we're gonna air it out, let's air it out, I sat down with Darryl Perkins one time. And that's when I had a concern about what was going on with the, his lobbying in Montgomery, I have not heard back from Darryl Perkins since then and that's been over a year ago. And I, I, respectfully, I should get the same respect. And you should too, as a council member.
Well, and I, and I'm, I'm agreeing, but I also know that one has to veil themselves too. Um, you know, um, I know where the president's office is, uh, it's nearby where I, my office sit. And, uh, and I know that being president, uh, you know, you're a busy person. And, but, you know, I try to access all of y'all, quite frankly. I think y'all can summarily agree to that. I try to keep folk in the loop and as much stuff that I know, um, and what have you, because it's not my desire that any of us not know what's going on. But I do believe that there's room for improvement. You know, I, I'm hearing you and, you know, and even before coming in here, we talked about that, that, that needs to change. And, uh, and, and I think the pre- the president agreed to do that. So, um, but I, I do believe there ought to be, uh, some increase in communication and, you know, and even in the recent, uh, week, I've seen a little change in that. Because I do believe that all of us are counselors, there are no degrees of counseling on this, uh, on this day as, or, uh, in this office of, of council. And so all of us, uh, uh, important and, uh, and needy of each other, quite frankly. Uh, because nobody, no one person in council can do anything by themselves. It takes five votes, uh, to get something done. And that needs to be a conversation, uh, amongst, uh, us counselors, uh, and with the mayor. Yeah, uh, and so, uh, and I don't mean to throw the mayor under the bus, but, uh, and we're not trying to do it, I'm just saying conversations just need to be had. And I've always subscribed, um, to the, um, with the understanding that if I'm informed, I can be for most stuff that goes on. But if there's nothing, nobody's talking to me and just automatically assume, then I think sometime people take advantage of you. You know, and in terms of what you're going to do, because at the end of the day, it's really not about ourselves anyway. It's really about the people, you know? Uh, and I just believe that that's how we move, that's how we get there. And so, um, I'm done and, uh, but I do believe, uh, communication is on its way. I really do believe that. And, um, and I would ask, uh, respectfully that the president, uh, uh, briefed you on whatever you need to be briefed on. You know, I just believe that's, that's how we do it.
All right. We're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk. Your second time?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
It's not the third. I, again, I want to make sure for public consumption, I'm gonna repeat this again. Every member of this council received not a report, but a proposal from this firm. They also received a proposal from the federal firm. I do believe that the council pro tem, being that he is second in command in regard to this council, should know what's going on. Let me just say that. I don't believe that disrespect, uh, you know, even if you have a philosophical difference, I believe that respect is due to all of us. That goes from the mayor to the council, to those that make up the council and everything else. That's the only way you're going to have any success and progress, you got to understand protocol and stick to it. So that is not what I'm, I'm even addressing, Mr. Protem. What I was saying was that I wanted to deal with it so that it does not leave this chamber that this person or even the federal lobbyists, that they just gave us a report, they didn't. They provided a proposal. It's up to the, the council members who were present to read it, even those who were not present. So I don't want it to go out of here that says that they gave us a report, they didn't give us a report. When someone submits a proposal, you can either reject, consider it, or decline it, it's up, it's up to you. And so with the information provided, that's all that I wanted to make sure this morning, because if I'm ever caught on television or... 'Cause if I'm ever caught on television or newspaper, I want to be quoted accurately. And I know what you say the first time gets a little bit more media attention than it does when you ask for them to rescind the article or to re-edit what they put out there. So I want to make sure that we, we're very careful in the, in the line of what we're saying this morning, 'cause we calling folk out by their name. And if we're gonna do that, then we need to make sure that we also say what actually happened. And then vote your conscience. You know, if you, if you believe that, uh, this service is not good, that's great, but do that. I just don't want us to, to be saying things that didn't occur when it did. And, and again, I'm just gonna say this. Um, whatever decisions that we make as various council members, I think we have to learn how to respect everybody's decision, including individually. So, I respect that. Uh, Ms. President, I think you've heard the Protem loud and clear. I'm in agreement with his assessment. If he believes that, uh, he has not been privy, he should be. And I think all of us agree with that. And so with that having said, Mr. President, uh, I'm ready for us to call a vote.
Counselor Abbott, your second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I don't think anybody is, uh, saying anything negative about Darrell Perkins' performance. I think that there is a feeling amongst some members of the council that there's a lack of information. So I would just move for a one-week delay so that all of us can vote for this item uh, with clear conscience and with comfort.
Second. There's a one-week delay on the table. I'm not in support of it, we can vote for a one-week delay. We're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
Voting's open. Counselor Member Hord. Okay, I see you, I'm sorry. Counselor Member Parker.
I can't see the vote.
I'm waiting on Parker, Counselor Member Parker.
You wanna abstain, counselor? Would you like to abstain? What is, is, the vote is, we have a vote before us, would you like to abstain? It's a vote for a one-week delay. Yes, no, or an abstention. How would you like to vote?
For one week delay?
Yes.
Thanks, sir. That vote should be up.
That item fails, the, the main motion is before us to approve the contract. We're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
Voting's open. That vote should be up.
That item passes. Um, next item, and for the record, my door is always open, but I'm not here to babysit.
Point of order.
State your point of order.
Yeah, po- the point of order, Ms. President, for those that are very, uh, observant in the hallways of City Council, my door is always open also. Thank you.
Um, point of, point of, go ahead. Next, uh... Point of order, Ms. Pres- Ms. President.
What's your point of order?
Uh, you were out of order.
Okay. Next item.
Item forty-three. Uh, a resolution confirming that the Council of the City of Birmingham should join case number zero-three CV two thousand fifteen dash nine hundred four twenty-two, Andrew Bennett and others Luther Strang- V- Luther Strange in official capacity as plaintiff in the fourth cause of action, but only as to this fourth cause of action.
All right, we have a mover and a second.
Move the item.
We have a second. Second. Roberson Hoyt, Counselor Tyson. Do you want to speak tonight? All right. We're ready to vote.
Voting should be up. Counselor Member Abbott. Thank you. That vote should be up.
That item passes with two extensions, uh, next item.
I think we got older new speakers.
We have, we have one, um, uh, travel addendum that we can do by unanimous consensus, Counselor Parker. City Council EPA meeting Atlanta, Georgia, September second through September third. Total is four hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I move the item, again.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That item passes. Counselor Parker. Um, let's move to suspend the rules for our speakers. Do you have a motion to suspend the rules for our speakers?
Uh, I, I move that we suspend the rules for our speakers.
We have a second. Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. First speaker.
Amy Evans.
Ms. Evans.
Uh, good morning.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Amy Evans Matthews. I live at nineteen oh-four fifteen Terrace North, three, uh, five, two, three, four in my zip. And we're here, uh, to, uh, ask the, uh, uh, mayor for a copy of list of all properties that being, uh, clean in our area, in dri- uh, District Five. We attended a workshop last night with our President Austin. And at that, uh, workshop, he was asked for a list of properties that being cleaned. And, uh, we were informed that he did not have that, and, uh, hadn't been able to receive one. So we would like for the mayor to, uh, have his, someone in his office provide a list for us so that we can tell our neighbors what areas are being cleaned, so that we trying to keep Druid Hills and all of District Five built up. We trying to encourage our residents to stay and to improve their quality of living. We have sidewalks nineteen, twentieth street, twenty-first, twenty-second that young people cannot, people just cannot pass. It is all overgrown. So, Mr. Mayor, we thank you, we thank Public Works too for what they did. We had a cleanup August twenty-eighth from a outside, uh, empty labels of love. They came, and they cleaned up for us, and Public Works immediately removed all the debris. So we thank them for that and all that you do. But, Mr. Mayor, we need a list, please, provided to our council so the District Five can know what areas are being cleaned.
What I'm going to do, and it was just handed out this morning, uh, to council, the areas that Public Works will be, uh, coming in to cut, uh, right-of-way's and different things in the areas. Uh, this gentleman here, Mr. Silman, will make a copy so that each one of you all can have a hard copy. We will also put this on the website and make it available to anyone else, uh, that would like to have a copy. For example, Druid Hills, uh, September the twenty-third, uh, we will be working in that area. And it has all the various neighborhoods listed. So if you could get Mr. Silman, he'll, uh, make you a copy of this.
Okay, we thank you.
And what else, Mr. Mayor, that they were asking last night was a copy of, um, a list of what lots have been cut and what lots that we plan on cutting. Uh, in, in Druid Hills, and there are several other neighborhoods here that are represented, but just District Five as a whole.
We'll get all of that together and put it online, uh, as well as make hard copies available.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right.
If you all could go back to the, uh, mayor's office, Mr. Silman will make sure you have a copy of that.
All right, uh, next speaker.
Henry Ward.
Mr. Ward. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Henry Ward. I live in, uh, Councilman Roberson's district. I live at nine fifty-three Garden Street in Hillman Estate, Second Sector. And I've been there forty years. Comes, uh, forty-one in September. And I have this vacant lot on the left of my house. We built there in seventy-three. And I've been trying to get that lot cut for years. I just gave up one time. And I decided I'd try it again. We had one councilman, I can't call his name now, he died, he was on council. He lived out in that district. I know, I know who you, y'all know who I'm talking about. He had it cut by me a couple of times. And we had some people out there cutting it, and I asked the head man of the truck about cutting that lot. I got, I wish you could see it, I tried to get a picture of it on my camera, but I can't get it right now. I got bushes coming over, growing over to my, one of my bathroom windows on the left-hand side. And I decided to just let it stay there so some of council member would see it and see what I'm up against. And I, I just, I'm eighty-six years old. And I just don't see why I had it be like that. And I had the council, one of the truck drivers, he said, "I can't go up in there, it's too much rocks up in there." Well, I know they level off other lots and everything, and they fight rocks, and they got machines to deal with this problem. Why can't, I know the rocks are not that big. And I just wonder, is there something I can do? I tried to, I called Fox Six, Ms. Robinson, she sent a man, a cameraman out there, and he took pictures of it. Never heard no more since. I've called her back several times, I give up, can't get her. And I just wondered, can the council do something about that for me?
Mr. Protem. Thank you, Ms. Ward, and, uh, do you have the address for the, the adjacent property to your property?
Well, it's a vacant lot.
Vacant lot?
Yeah, they said it can't build no house on it, 'cause it's the way it's, it's, uh, diagrammed.
So it's next to, uh, nine fifty-three, uh, Garden Street?
That's where, that's where I live.
Right, but it's next door to you, correct?
Right.
I'm stating this publicly, so Department of Public Works and the mayor's office can, can sit, go take a look at it for you.
I sure would.
And, uh, see what the, uh, issues are with the property, who's the name of the title, uh, on the property, those type of things, so we can take a look at it for you.
All right.
Okay, but that's nine th- fifty-three Garden Street.
Nine fifty-three Garden Street, where I live, right next to the lot.
Yes, sir.
Got some people on the other side, but that lot is just going, and they got some bushes. They're not, they're not grass no more, it's bushes, and it's growing over into my window, my ba- one of my bathroom windows.
Yes.
I could cut it down, but I'm too old to do all that kind of stuff.
You look great, by the way. You look very good.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ward, and, uh, we'll have somebody mayor if we can, take a look at that property. Uh, thank you, Ms. Fancher, thank you, Mr. Ward.
Mr. President, my name is, uh, Mr. Ward. Before you get away, um, I hope I look as good as you do when I'm eighty-six. You could've told me you were sixty-six, and I would've believed it. But I wanted to ask you, how long has it been since there was a house on that property?
Never have been a house on there.
Well, the problem is, the city doesn't cut lots that have never been developed. So, that, I mean, well, the city isn't supposed to cut lots that have never been developed. Obviously, you said it had been cut by city workers previously. But, um, do you know who owns it?
No. Uh, one of the fellows that was cutting it one time said, "Somebody owned it, but they live up north somewhere." Some lady owned it and everything, and he's, he was trying to find out who it was. I haven't heard from him since several years now, I don't know whether you ever found out or not.
Yeah, I just wondered if there, if you'd ever had a neighbor on that side. And of course, you know, you said you were too old to do it, but you can cut anything that crosses your property line, anything. So, but, if you can't, you can't.
I can't even cut my grass now, and I know I could save that forty dollars, uh, if I could, but, uh, I can get around. I'm eighty-six years old, be eighty-seven next February. But, uh, uh, I was just, I have to have somebody to cut my grass, my yard, I try to keep it decent. But this is just ruining the sight of my town. We got a nice neighborhood, and, uh, I'm about the only one that got a problem on this situation. 'Cause I live on the corner, on the corner, and that vacant lot is right on the corner.
Okay, well, thank you.
I appreciate what you all can do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Thank you, yes.
Sir, you said the property that you're talking about is, is, is a corner lot? It's a corner lot?
It's a corner lot.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll get that address for you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker.
Willian Body.
Ms. Body. Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
I won't need the three minutes.
Okay, Ms. Body.
I'm Willian Body, president of the Graymont Neighborhood. I would like to, uh, thank the president and the meeting that we had on last night. It was very informative, very good. I just wanna leave, uh, quickly read a scripture. "But seek the welfare of this city where I have sent you into exile, and pray to the Lord on its behalf, for in its welfare you will find your welfare." I learned on last night, uh, it came up, uh, the president shared with us so that they had, he had just come out of a meeting with, uh, Regent's Field. And the question came up, um, about the, um, finishing paying, uh, Regent's Field for the work that had been done. And we learned that the plan is to take the funds that's in the, uh, area for the, uh, crossplex. Well, I'm gonna say this, you can't, I can't prosper as a person if I'm gonna take away from my neighbor. And so that is what I wanted to say today. This had done once before, and funds were taken from various neighborhoods to pay the, uh, persons for Regent's Field. Well, we are back at that, and it, it's, it's still the same thing, it's just going around about way. Because when you take from the crossplex, that's in neighborhoods as well as communities. And so I, it, this has been on my heart for a long time, to speak about this. That's, that's not prospering, the city's not prospering when you wanna take away from others to build others up. Thank you.
Counselor Tyson.
Ms. Body, do you remember when I, Ms. Body? Ms. Body, you know, you remember when I, I talked to y'all about them taking the money off of Cotton Avenue? You remember when I told you they took the money from Cotton Avenue, and I, I know it's...
Well, I know that it was from the western area. It was one of the communities and neighborhoods that had happened. And it's been a minute, and then it comes up again last night during our, uh, discussion in the meeting. And I just, uh, wanted to say, as a citizen of this city, we cannot prosper taking away from our neighbors and our sisters and brothers.
Thank you, Ms. Body, and I explained the reason why, I talked about the fact that we didn't have enough money to do the warm-up pool and all of that, but, um, uh, but they wanted to know where the funding was coming from. Uh, so I did explain that. And, uh, that verse was Jeremiah twenty-nine and seven.
Next speaker.
End of speech.
Okay. Um, Counselor Hoyt. We're down to older new bids, Counselor Hoyt.
Yes, uh, just wanted to make an announcement that, uh, Miles College versus University of North Alabama will be played Sunday at Legion Field at six o'clock, uh, and that you can purchase the tickets at www dot Eventbrite, and that's B-R-I-T-E, that's one word, E, I mean, um, yeah, Eventbrite dot com. And that's at Miles Col- or in the Miles College Business Office, or you can visit, uh, www dot Miles Golden Bears, that's one word, um, dot E-D-U. Um, and this comes from the Public Information Officer out there. Um, just wanted to announce again that the Public Safety Committee me- Just wanted to announce again that the Public Safety Committee meeting scheduled for Labor Day has been canceled, and our next meeting will be on the twenty-first of September at four o'clock, in these chambers here on third floor. The next meeting for Part of What the Purpose will be held Tuesday, October the eighth, in Conference Room D and E. And we look forward to that day, we know that's a day of empowerment, and that many of our citizens have access to health care as well as job opportunities. And so we have about two hundred something partners with Part of What the Purpose. And Dr. O'Quinn, I hope you get a chance to come out this year and, and see what's going on in Enslie, because we're making a difference out there. Fairview Neighborhood Association meets on Tuesday, September the first, at six o'clock at Bush Hills. Thomas Neighborhood meets at six-thirty at Mount Hebron, that's this evening. Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Okay, Council Tyson?
Thank you, President. September the seventh, Powellian Neighborhood will be meeting at four P.M. Henry Crompton Recreation Center. Glenn Iris will be meeting at the Catholic Church, September the eighth. Arlington West End will be meeting at six P.M. at West End Library. South Tittysville will be meeting at the, at six P.M. at the Tittysville Library. I would like to wish my daughter a happy birthday today. I love her so much, and she's doing such a good job. Happy birthday, Portia. I would like to make sure that everyone know that Disabled Veterans of America, located on Two Thirty-Eight Second Avenue North, provides free help to fill out benefit claims through the military and the VA. Every Tuesday, ten A.M. to two P.M. Every fourth Thursday, from six to eight P.M. I would like to thank everyone for coming out for the Cooper Green Community Cleanup Day this Saturday. And the next one is actually scheduled for September the twelfth. And really, in the Cooper Green Community, it really wasn't really messed up, it was around the area that was really filthy, that we, we found the most trash, and it was mostly wine bottles and things like that, and someone had dumped mattresses, which we know it was probably a landlord, because they had furniture and all of that out there. Woodland Park will be, will be having their Get to Know Your Neighbor Day on September the twelfth, I would like for everyone to come out. There will be a street dedication for James and Johnny Somersville on the corner of Lincoln and Fourteenth Street in Woodland Park. This was approved years ago, they just now decided to do this event, because she was not really in good health. So it's been held that long, I know we've been having problems getting the ordinance filled, but this one just had been approved when I first got in office. This was approved. Oh, I attended several events this past week, I'd like to wish Kiara congratulations, I actually attended her wedding, it was, I cried through the whole wedding, it was actually beautiful, I thought it was just a fairy tale wedding, I had never seen anything like that. It looked like it came off of tea, oh, me and you gonna be next one, oh, okay. It was a beautiful wedding, I had a great time, I also had an opportunity to, to be the mistress of ceremony for Lee Williams Concert, they had at East Birmingham Church of God. It was every bit of a thousand people at that event, it was a, it was just really good. I had been in church since six that morning, so I was filled with the Holy Spirit all day that day. And Lord knows I needed working the way I work. But I actually had a great time on Sunday. And I would like to also do a resolution for Deborah Fields, one of really my classmates, she, I graduated after her and her husband, but she has been a, a, a great person in the community. Her children play sports with my daughter, and I would like to do a resolution for her.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move, move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That item passes.
And I also want to mention Mayor Bill, I meant, Coach Bill's father funeral that Council Robertson and, and I, Pro Tim Robertson attended, which I told you, every time I think about it, my voice just get, like I want to cry. I remember him from the way he treated us when we were young, we were, we were little bitty children. When he made sure that we got on a public transit bus in order to go to camp when our, our parents had to go to work. He made sure we got on the bus, and he made sure we got off the bus, and he walked us to Lawson State Gym, he made sure we were fed. He looked after, after us, and that's something that he wasn't hired to do, he was there for security. And we love him, and we're gonna definitely miss him. Thank you, this is it.
Council Scales? All right, Council Rafferty?
Thank you. The Transportation and Communications Committee meeting for tomorrow, Wednesday the second, has been canceled, there's no business before us. Thursday, September third, Eastwood Neighborhood Association meeting will be at the Eastwood Library at six-thirty P.M. Friday, September fourth, for all counselors who happen to be hanging around City Hall then, we'll be walking over to Sher, the Sheridan Hotel for a blood drive. Red Cross called me and said they needed our blood, so, so, between eleven-thirty and twelve-thirty. Mr. Parker, you'll be, you'll be here to go with me, correct?
I'll go with you.
Thank you, thank you. Saturday, and that's basically all the business news I have, but Saturday, September fifth, is another tremendous holiday. It is National Cheese Pizza Day. Sunday, September sixth, is National Read a Book Day, and Monday is Labor Day, so everybody enjoy your very full weekend. And Mr. Mayor, don't we have a football game, Labor Day, at, at Legion Field? I hadn't gotten any information on it, that's why I was asking. Oh, I came in late, so I apologize.
Council Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Joint Budget and Finance Committee and the Economic Development Committee meeting will be held on Monday, September fourteenth, at four P.M. in Conference Rooms D and E. Submissions are due on or before twelve noon on Wednesday, September ninth. So everybody who wants to put something on the agenda, please take note that you need to turn your submission in in a timely fashion. Electronics Recycling Day that was, that was sponsored by KBBC was very successful. I'm always thankful when they have that, because I'm finding computer parts at my house all the time. I discover new caches of computer parts, so the only thing they wouldn't take was my electric mixer that died. They said it wasn't electronic. I said, "Well, it's electric," but that didn't, that didn't work for them, they took the cord, but they didn't take the mixer. Anyway, the, well, the grand opening of the Negro Southern League Museum on Friday, was it Friday?
Yes.
It was great. The weather was beautiful, the site was beautiful, there wasn't a restaurant, but I'm sure it's coming. And I hope it's really good, because I want some good food one of these days. But the, the event was great, the mayor actually threw the ball to the catcher who had the glove, and it worked out really well. The mayor and I have done some pitching together before, and so I was concerned about him, but he, he did a good job, he practiced. I want to wish everyone a safe and happy Labor Day. The neighborhood meetings that we have upcoming tonight is Forest Park-South Avondale at six-thirty at the Avondale Library. Then we have on the eighth, East Avondale Neighborhood Meeting, and also on the eighth Highland Park Neighborhood Meeting. And Highland Park has not had a meeting in a couple of months due to the, the health issues of their president, so this will be a really great meeting with, I'm sure, lots of, lots of people in attendance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Scales?
Thank you, Mr. President, as always, I wanted to thank the citizens of District One, as well as the city of Birmingham, for affording me the opportunity to be their voice. I do want to invite everyone to come on out to the Labor Day Classic between Miles College and their opponent. I think it's gonna be a wonderful game, it's gonna be at Legion Field, so we do want to make sure that you know that you're more than welcome to come. We are inviting you. Also, we have two neighborhood meetings tonight, we have Bridlewood Neighborhood Association, and they meet at the East Benson Valley Neighborhood Association, excuse me, East Benson Valley Recreation Center, that's at six o'clock. Seven o'clock is Apple Valley at the same location. I do want to ask everyone to please continue to pray for all of our children in our city. I am very touched by when I see young people who have to take the form of violence as a way of, of a way of not handling certain things correctly. So I want to ask and solicit everybody's prayers throughout this city, and at this time, particularly for Huffman High School. Mr. Mayor, I did have one quick question for you, didn't want to put you on the spot, but I see you kind of leaving. I did have an inquiry about the list, and if, if, because I want to pass this out too, I like passing out information. So, for example, like we have the neighborhood listed, will we also have like some supporting documents that'll say where it'd be located, so we can be able to help provide and get the word out?
The general list, the general list that you have is the neighborhoods that we will be working in, and we anticipate on cutting all of those areas.
Yes, sir.
It will be subject to weather. We're trying not to be specific, because as you know, last week it rained, and areas we were supposed to be working in, we could not get into those areas, and we had to move them. But generally, those are the areas that we will be working in. I know council wants specific lots and description, legal description and all of that, we don't have that at this time.
Yeah, the only thing that I was just saying, Mayor, and I think you pretty much get the concept that if you see Apple Valley, for example, if I'm going to, which I'll be going to their meeting tomorrow, then, you know, they say, "Well, where are they gonna be cutting?" I don't want to give the appearance that not only have you not provided the information, but that I don't know. So, you know, I can explain about permitting the weather, it was just, I just wanted to kind of give them an idea specifically where, where in their neighborhood. And, and, and if you don't have it, I can't make it be there, but if you would consider that, so we can help provide it, a holistic approach to it. One other thing that I would ask respectfully of you, Mayor, is to get your permission this morning. I, I learned, which I did know, that as of a couple of years ago, council members could reserve parks. Well, now we can't reserve parks, that's an executive action. So if you don't mind, Mayor, can I have your permission this morning to designate someone from your office to be able to reserve a park on behalf of the district? Do I have your permission, Mayor, to do that?
I think you need to go through the Park Board.
No, I've already talked to the Park Board, and what I was told from the Law Department is that the council doesn't have that authority, that that's an executive authority.
When you said reserve...
Yes, sir. Basically, we can't reserve parks anymore. It, that, that is an executive action, and that, and I'm okay with it, I just wanted to make sure that I followed the law.
I have to look into it.
Okay, so, okay, well, I'm just only going with, by what Mr. Roberts, which he's very thorough, I must admit, that he mentioned that council members can't reserve the park, and that's not an issue. It's just, we want to just have your permission to be able to, since that's the way it has to go.
I've not experienced that in the past.
I know, I said the same thing, but, but once he said it...
With Enslie Park, when we have Part of What the Purpose...
Yes, sir.
I've never had to reserve that park for that purpose, so I, I don't know what, what Mr. Roberts is talking about.
Okay, well, it is, is in light of the, the resolution that we passed this morning, and I, I agree with you, Mayor, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I said that to him myself, I said, "In the past, you know, we could just say we have an X event, and as long as there's a public declaration on it, we could do that." And so I was informed that that would take an executive action, because obviously, the city wants, we have a city activity, assumes that liability. So I said, "Okay," and it was fine, I just only wanted Mayor to just follow up with you, and get your permission for someone to just reserve the park, and, and we go on from there.
I'm assuming that council members have the same right as any citizen, and citizens go to the Park Board, and they reserve parks for different events. And the Park Board asks that you do that, so that they don't have competing events going on there. That's the tradition that I'm aware of, that's been done in the past.
Okay, all right, well, anyway, I mean, as long as you get what I'm saying, it is, it's about the city liability. And, and, and the event that we are having has already been declared, has made a public declaration on it, sir. And, and because of that, it was the liability issue for the board to make sure that, you know, that we, we follow suit with your office, to work with your staff, and to make sure that, that the park that we're requesting is being asked for. You know, it has to be done through your office, and that's why we even did a resolution this morning. So as long as, is with that understanding, then, Mayor, I'm hoping that, that you'll give us that permission, if possible, today, to go ahead and reserve it, because we're dealing with some time restraints. The other thing, very quickly, Mr. President, is about William Robertson, I am, I'm gonna speed it up. Mr. Robertson obviously was a member of Faith Chapel Christian Center. My heart not only goes out to his family, but I will say that my pastor's been talking and teaching on family, so this is a time that we have to embrace his entire family. I'm asking us as council members, that once the funeral arrangements have been completed, if, if we would make a presence there as a council. The reason being is because he has done a lot of work on behalf of the city, and I've made certain, that certain folk knew, even at our church, that the council would like to have their part in it, being that we got a presiding council member, and then we also, as a council, have voted for this particular contractor to do certain work throughout the city. So just wanted to make you all aware of that. The last thing is, I, I do want to say I'm very excited about the Negro League, that they finally opened, and I hope that it gets the, the word out, and it informs a lot of people of the contributions that were made through the Negro League. And, and it was a story about not only what happened in Birmingham, but how baseball helped to change the way we look at racial discrimination. So I want to invite everyone to come out for that, and, Mr. President, that's all that I have at this time. But again, I thank the council, that even in things that we disagree with, I, I, I thank you for all of us coming together and recognizing that we have our individual opinion, and we respect one another to do that collectively. Thank you, Ms. President.
Council Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President, just one announcement, that the Park Board will be meeting tomorrow at nine A.M. at Legion Field, so, thank you.
Thank you, leadership. District Nine is excited to be hosting another Summer Jam. This year's Summer Jam is entitled Enslie Alive. If many of you can remember the days of cottons and some of the old stores, the Enslie Grill. We're trying to bring Enslie back in a big way, and to show people that they're still active and thriving businesses located in Enslie. We're gonna do something special for our friend, Mr. William Robertson, who was one of the pioneers in trying to bring Enslie back. He bought that old bank building on the corner of Nineteenth and E, and made that his living quarters. Added on to the bank, and was one of the first downtown Enslie dwellers. And we have a movement of people coming down to Enslie now, because much of Council President Austin's district is being outpriced. So people are now looking at Enslie for their loft dwelling, and we look to see a surge as we bring business, industry, and commerce back to Enslie. So this Enslie Alive concert is just that, to let everyone know that Enslie is alive, Enslie is still thriving, and we look forward to doing some amazing things in Enslie. The concert takes place Saturday, September twelfth, starts at two P.M. Saturday, September twelfth, at two P.M. So next Saturday, it will be going down in Enslie. So we will have food trucks there, we will have some of our craft breweries, working with some of our... We will have some of our craft breweries working with some of our local pubs there. So everybody will have their doors open. It'll be an open house. But Todd Simpson and Mojo Child will be the headliner, Todd Simpson and Mojo Child. I understand that they are a dynamic pop-rock group, and they're gonna really turn it out. Also, we're gonna have, we're gonna have award winner, what's the one you get, Grammy? A Grammy Award winner, Alvin Garrett, will be singing as well, along with a dynamic band called Heels and Chucks. So we've got a wonderful array of talent that's gonna be displayed next Saturday, September 12th, Saturday, September 12th, from 2:00 to 6:00 P M. Downtown Enslie at the intersection of Avenue F. and 19th Street. So I want to thank Red Mountain Radio, Rev Birmingham, as well as Mayor William Bell for working with District Nine to make sure Enslie is alive. Thank you, leadership.
Council Roseanne?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning to everyone. It's 11:36, so we are moving efficiently with today's council meeting. Council Atishe did mention the home-going celebration for Robert A. Bell, who's a former neighborhood president, outstanding civic leader in our community at Lawson State Community College, diehard, we know, the dragon, and diehard Alabama A and M Bulldog. And he was sent off in fine style, and my prayers are continued with the Bell family. Mama Maggie, keep looking up. Coach Bell, keep looking up. He's in a better place, so we'll continue in our prayers. I want to congratulate my youngest sister, Jamia Storey. Her and Adrian had a bubbling boy at 1:36 P M. on yesterday, Hampton Lee Storey, and got another nephew, councilor. So I'm excited about that. He was seven pounds, three ounces, twenty-five inches long, and had a thirteen, I think, centimeter-sized head. So his head's like his uncle, pretty big. So I'm just excited for them, and congratulations to Adrian and Jamia. And this will make the number eight grandchild for James and Linda, my mother and father, so they have a lot of fun ahead of them. On Wednesday, the groundbreaking ceremony will take place for the Oxford Pharmaceutical Company that's gonna be located in the Jefferson Metropolitan Park at Lakeshore at 2:00 P M. on Wednesday. We welcome everyone to come out to be there for that groundbreaking ceremony. Today, the 4:00 P M. Oakwood Place Neighborhood Association will meet at Harrison Park Recreation Center. On Friday, September 4th, at 4:00 P M., Jones Valley Neighborhood Association meeting will take place at Patterly Library. There is a special call Planning and Zoning Committee meeting today that will be held on the fifth floor of the Planning and Engineering Department, Planning and Zoning Department, excuse me, in the conference room at 4:00. So a special call Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. We have on the zoning board of adjustment, five total vacancies that I want to announce. Three are non-affiliated. There's one registered architect vacancy and one real estate broker vacancy. So if you'd like to consider serving on the zoning board of adjustments, please submit your resume and information to my office for consideration. Last but not least, I want to wish a happy birthday to Rosalyn Young, the president of Tarkley City Neighborhood. She is turning a year older today, and, you know, in the spirit of reconciliation, in the spirit of cooperation, in the spirit of leadership that we serve on, I think it's time now that we come to some, sit at the table and have some conversations as council members and as colleagues, including with our mayor, for the good of the city and for the good of our citizens. So I have, and I know that the president is aware, along with other council members that have had some input, put a letter for consideration to present to the mayor for his review as it relates to just sitting at the table and having a discussion to talk about how we move forward harmoniously. So I'm gonna disseminate this letter now on the dais for your review so everybody knows what the letter entails, and once the president and I get together on it, discuss it, if it's all a blessing from all council members, we'll consider moving it to the mayor's office for his consideration. But I will pass this out for your review and consideration, then we'll get together here in the near future. Happy Labor Day weekend to everybody and to my colleagues, and have a blessed and safe Labor Day weekend. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Real quick, the Wahoma Neighborhood meets Thursday, September 3rd, from 6:00 to 7:00 at East Lake Church of God in Christ. College Hills Neighborhood meeting has been rescheduled due to Labor Day. It will be on Monday, September 14th, from 6:00 to 7:00, J C C O. East Avondale meets Tuesday, September 8th, from 6:00 to 7:00 at Bethel Baptist Church. And we have a, I would like to announce that we have, today is the first day of fall. I'm sure you all probably walked out of your homes this morning, felt a cool, crisp breeze in the air. Hopefully, that'll help slow down some of this weed growing in our neighborhoods, Mr. Fancher, and we can be able to stretch the money out a little bit more. We are still in, some of my neighborhood officers are still here, not satisfied, I see the mayor's gone, but not satisfied with the response that they've been given from the mayor's office pertaining to the specific lots that are being, that have been cut and will be cut. And I know that that's something that has been requested. I know the council has requested that, so if we can get that information as soon as possible. I know that there's gotta be a report about what has been cut, and that at least is a start. And there's gotta be at least an idea of what is planned to be cut. When we go into these neighborhoods, I don't just assume that we're gonna let the people that are cutting the grass just go in there and just start cutting lots that have not been identified as lots that need to be cut. So that is what the residents are asking. I think that that's what each council member wants to know, and the council has continued to ask for this information. And I will review the letter that the Pro Tim has put together. I appreciate him providing leadership on this issue, and, you know, that's what we want to continue to do, is work together. That's what we're here for. We're not here to fight with anybody. We're here fighting for our citizens and fighting for our neighborhoods. That's what we're here for. So I look forward to sitting down with the mayor any day that he's, will make himself available. We do have committee of the whole meetings that take place every month. On the fourth Wednesday of every month, from 4:00 until usually 6:00, we have Budget and Finance Committee meeting that meets the second and fourth Monday of every month. We have several committee meetings that meet several times a month where the mayor can attend any of those and provide any update to any information. Those are standing meetings. If we have to have a special call meeting just to meet with him, we can do that as well, but we do have standing meetings that take place every month, the same time, same place. So looking forward to having the mayor come and speak to us about what's going on in the city. The last thing I'll say, the whole goal of everything that we're doing as a council is to make sure that we are being good stewards of the citizens', the taxpayers' money. That's all that we're here to do, is to oversee the budget and make sure that the money is being spent in the appropriate way. What we also have to make sure of is that the planning is going forth, the planning for all these different projects, and all the different things that we see happening around our city. We need to have plans in place before we continue to just move on all these different projects. And that's all that we want. We want to make sure that we're planning so that we know where we're headed. You can't get in the car and just start driving and not know where you're going if you're trying to drive across the country. You need a map, and that's all that we're asking for. So with that, Council Abbott, I know you have something you would like to say, I guess, and then we can move to adjourn this meeting.
Well, yeah, I did want to say something about the letter that Council President Pro Tim Roberson handed out. You know, I really think, you know, we've got lots of meetings. We can all go to meetings, but we, in order to resolve this somewhat contentious atmosphere that has come upon us, I really think we need, like, to do this in the atmosphere of a retreat, which we talked about having, and then we un-talked about having, instead of just more sessions at City Hall. I think it's going to take some real conversation instead of talking at each other, which is a lot of what happens up here on this dais and in other meetings. We've got to sit down and really talk to each other, talk with each other, and try to mend some of the fences that maybe have fallen down and gotten into the weeds, maybe a snake's wrapped around one of them. So we just, I mean, I think that's really important, and just doing it at a standing meeting, I don't think is going to fix anything. You know, the way that we learn to get along with each other and really feel one another is more in the casual things that we do and the just fun times, like going to Council Scales' event in her district. To me, that was, that was an opportunity for us to get to know each other a little better. I just think that that's gonna be an important aspect of this idea of the mayor and the city council, you know, coming together as one. So I just wanted to throw that out. I'm gonna be like Ms. Scales in a few minutes and just talk and talk, but that's it.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This meeting is adjourned.